Good evening. September eighteenth, twenty twenty five, and this is a Groton Board of Education Committee of the Whole meeting. In attendance, we have, I believe Ian Thomas is online, Dean Antipas, Andrea Ackerman, Jay Whiteloff, Mike Whitney, Jen White, is Jen? Yeah, Jen White's online. And Sean Corcoran, who is a new board member, so welcome, Sean.
Thank you.
We're very excited to have you, and myself, Adrian Johnson. We also have Susan Austin, Anne Marie Mancini, and Lauren Cassini. Oh, yes, and Sam. Sorry. Don't want to forget Sam. All right. So the first order of business is reviewing the August eighteenth meeting minutes. So. Anyone like to make a motion to approve?
Move we accept the August eighteenth, twenty twenty five meeting minutes.
I'll second.
Any discussion? So all in favor approving the meeting minutes?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Obstained? All right. So it's all in favor. And so this is a great meeting because we get to talk about student data and how we've been doing. We look at some of the successes and challenges that we had last year. And I think we're also gonna talk about the district's dashboard and the state dashboard. So with that, I will, we're on attachment two, and I will turn it over to Susan.
All right. Well, we're excited because as Adrian is saying, we really want to introduce you to the state dashboard and have you be have access to it at any given time so that you can also keep up with how we're doing. I do think that we need to give Lauren Cassini, move her on so that she can open up her computer. Mark? And share the presentation? So. So it's a kind of two-part series. This is really the large picture of looking at district data and also how to navigate the state dashboard and some ideas that we have around showcasing other data that we have beyond state data eventually. So we have kind of our own dashboard. But between the state dashboard and those other areas, it would give really the public full view of everything that's happening. We also know that, you know, this is a work in progress. We really tied it into the strategic plan because that plan is going to be our guide into the future. And aligned with that plan is now a district improvement plan, which we'll be sharing with you, and school improvement plans. And you'll be able to hear from all the principals in the next couple of months. You know, that template that we have month to month, it's kind of chock full, but there's a lot of data. So before we get into budget numbers, we're going to be talking about data, and you're going to get some real in-depth insight into that. And then the whole, so what now, what are we going to do about some of these challenges? How are we going to do, you know, accelerated learning and do some correction here? So that we are still in line with what the state wants every district to accomplish by twenty thirty, which is to get to those certain, those target numbers. So you can take it from here.
So as Susan has said, the purpose really of tonight is begin to look at some of the data that has now become available and to also orient, he was aboard to the comprehensive data dashboard that currently exists through Connecticut State Department of Ed in conjunction with Groton. And hopefully by Tuesday tonight, you'll have a better understanding of how we interact with them to be able to come up with the public facing, what we call EdSite, which is the comprehensive dashboard. So really, it begins with the work we did last year. We always want to go back to this, and you'll notice that moving forward as we talk about data and schools present and we present as a district our improvement plans, we will always come back to this, our strategic plan, which a large variety of stakeholders worked tirelessly last year to identify our, our major goals, the areas that we really need to focus on to move our district forward. And that became what's known as the Groton Public Schools Strategic Plan. And from those, that plan are our five major pillars. Okay? And so again, you're going to see this during each meeting to orient us, to always bring us back to the same, the same page, right? What are we trying to accomplish? What are our goals? Where do we want Groton to go? Right? So you'll see that our first pillar is really to accelerate academic achievement. And we do this by providing students with standards-aligned curriculum. We are focused on student-centered instruction and engaging learning experiences to support our vision of the graduate, right? So rise in students. The second pillar is to cultivate a rich and vibrant learning environment, our community, and we do this by fostering a safe and inclusive environment that engages and empowers students, families, and staff alike. Our third pillar, strengthen pathways that develop post-secondary readiness. We do this. Oh, I think I mixed them up, but I'm sorry. By preparing all GPS learners to be future-ready and globally-prepared citizens. Number four, we attract and grow a skilled and supported workforce. And we do this by recruiting, developing, and retaining and celebrating exceptional talent within our district. And finally, our fifth pillar is to improve operational efforts and increase fiscal responsibility. We'll do this by refining and implementing structures and policies that transform district, district systems and remove barriers for educators and students alike. So again, this is what we'll always ground ourselves in at the beginning of each meeting.
And Lauren has conveniently placed links everywhere you go. So you receive this both digitally and hard copy. The digital version is the one you should save so that you can always go back to this and play around with it in the sandbox and really go and check out some of these sites. And you can compare us to anyone else you want to compare us to and the state alike. So, but we will be giving you presentations on that as well.
And if there's ever anything as you're playing around with this or you're manipulating the, the site at all and you come to questions or you're not sure how to navigate something, you can always reach out to me. Happy to sit with you. I love this. They just got a new face too. So the whole public-facing site has had an uplift. So it's, I think it's a little more user-friendly. But you know, if you're not on it all the time, if you do have questions, you're always welcome to reach out to me. I'm happy to sit with you at any time. But what I want you to look at right now is the top part. This tells you that these are key performance indicators. And again, we're always going back to that strategic, you know, strategic plan. And so what a key performance indicator is, it's our measurement. How do we know where we stand in terms of making the progress we want to be making? So we look at a number of variety of different data points to do this, depending on the pillar. Right? So as an example, accelerating academics, there are multiple indicators that we use to determine whether or not we're making the necessary gains that we want to make or if we need to shift, right? And so you'll see that, as Susan mentioned, each one of these is a link. Okay? So if you click on it, it will bring you to that particular indicator and the information that you would be interested in getting or looking at under that particular indicator. Right?
And some will have twenty twenty-four data because accountability index, for, for one thing, usually comes out in the wintertime all the way through spring. So that and the report card are kind of the last hurrah on the data that gets released. So you can click on it to show that point if you want, just to see how it opens up to the accountability index.
Hope it's not allowing me to run here right now because I think I put it as a present.
Yeah. Sorry, hesitation.
Sorry. Let me see if I can get out of here.
So really quick, do these links work for the public that are embedded in the agenda?
Yeah, they could, yes.
All right, so if they're public, clicked on the agenda, clicked on the attachment, they should be able to follow us around as well.
Yeah, we were even thinking about publishing some of this on the front face of, and then also in a couple of other places, almost having an area to talk about the strategic plan. I think that's already up on the website. But to showcase the data so that people could get there.
Since you got to ask. This is a question that applies generally to the information that's being provided. So this is not just for us, it's also for the public, right? Okay. And we know that some of the data is, as a state, you like to use the term embargoed, some of the data is, you know, is, is in the past. So is, if, with people say, okay, we know where are we under, you know, they click, they look for various data. Will there be an indication someplace or a note that says, by the way, this is as of this date? We don't have, this is last year, et cetera, so people don't freak out enough.
Of that, so this is last year's.
What you'll be able to see is.
Can you get a bigger, by any chance, so they can see that? Because it actually does say twenty twenty-four.
Because we know, and we've, and we're reminded, oh, by the way, this data is, you know, twenty twenty-four data, it's not twenty twelve. You're not going to see twenty twenty-five data until February twenty twenty-six or something like that.
Yes, and that's important to know, and that is important for the public to know. And on the next slide, like, once we go through a little bit of this, I want to walk you through exactly what that process looks like and why everything isn't like a major data dump in August so that you can view all the pieces at one time. There's this rigorous process that all of the data goes through from the state, from us, all the way to the state. So things come in, in, in pieces. So as an example, our SBAQ data is in fact on the public site, and we can go to that right now and look at it. However, the accountability report, which is what I have pulled up, there are still pieces missing. And so this typically will come out anywhere from mid-December to really February. It's been a little earlier, I feel like it's been more on the early January, late December side, but keep that in mind, right? So what you would do is you could easily look on each page to see exactly what is available. So as an example, we have for the accountability report, which I just told you typically does not come out until mid-December through February. We still have only twenty-three, twenty-four data. In that, you can, if you look, this one's a good tool. And while it comes out a little bit later, it's the whole picture, right? So we can look at pieces like just the SBAQ right now, which will give you timely information. And we're going to look at that later in the slides. But in terms of wanting to really get a better gist of where our district is, the accountability index gives you that big picture idea, right? Because it's looking at our performance, it's looking at our meaning achievement, it's looking at our growth, it's looking at our attendance, it's looking at our arts, it's looking at all of those pieces and combining it to come up with a score, right? So when we think about that big picture, this score is really how we rate in terms of the state.
And I was really impressed when I came to Groton in twenty fourteen, the Board of Ed had a document called the Yardstick. And what they were trying to get at was to go beyond academics and see all the other things that kids were involved in that were really meaningful and looking at attendance and looking at other things. So they were really ahead of the game back in those days. And then the state, you know, decided to also look at more than just the scores and, you know, look at access to the arts as a main component. So we're pleased that the state is looking at so many different parts of a kid's life in schools.
So one thing that is nice, not one, but one of the things that is nice about EdSite public is it gives you the ability to look at the information and be able to filter it in certain ways. And again, dependent on the report you're on will determine what you're able to filter and how. So as an example, if you were to visit the Smarter Balance page on this website right now, you could filter out how are students doing by free and reduced lunch? How are, how are students doing, you know, grouped out by military? So there's different ways to filter that. On a, on a page like the accountability page, which is what you see up on the board, you can choose to look at more than one area at a time. So we can compare Groton to the state right now, if that's what you chose to do. But let's say you started asking questions, right? Because whenever we're looking at data, one starting place leads you down a number of rabbit holes that you could go down. And so my advice to you, whenever you go on to EdSite public, go in with either a purpose in mind or a question you want answered. Because if you just go in, you'll probably end up more than likely just overwhelmed, right? So go in with an intentional purpose or focus or question that you want answered. And then come out, and maybe you come up with a new question. And then from there, you can go back in and you can try a different site that maybe you'll find your answer on. But what is nice about this, you can, on this particular page with the accountability index, you can compare yourself to other districts in our DURB. You could compare yourself to other districts, let's say. I think this is, nope, that's not payment. If you wanted to look at North Stonington. So you have all these different options for who you want to compare to. And if you want to do it over time, maybe I just want to look at last year's data. Maybe I just, maybe I want to see that trend over time. So you're able to manipulate the data a little bit better here to give you a broader sense of where we're at. So this is just one particular page. Let me see, I've lost my PowerPoint in here, do you have a question?
Yeah, Lauren, yeah, while you're, while you're working, I'm going to follow you with this. This, this, when you go to the accountability, I know this is the state, this is the SD, this is EdSite. Do they have an explanation that's, that's clearly found of what is meant by the accountability index?
So down below, you have, they have little videos that can help to explain what it is. So you can watch a little video. You can get the two-page FAQ is my favorite, like if you're just getting into it. That's a great starting place, either the video or the FAQ. If you are really into data and understanding like the formulas, you can find that on here too. But.
Because if I wanted, if I wanted to critique the accountability index, because Susan mentioned, you know, yardstick measuring not just academic performance, but other factors as well. A cynic might come in and say, you know, anything like the yardstick or the accountability index could also be used and tweaked by including things beyond what people normally expect from schools, academic performance, for example, to kind of juice numbers, to hide things. You know, I'm reminded of Bill Murray in Caddyshack, you know, so I've got, on my deathbed, I'll have stream, I'll have total consciousness, I got that going for me. You know, so what's in the accountability index? And is it, you know, how is, how are things weighted? So, but we don't have any, any control over that one because that's the state putting it together and having things. I'm just saying, if I was to be cynical, I would say just exactly what's in there. Yeah.
Lauren, I have a quick question. Is there, is there a way to look at this by grade? I know that NGSS tests five, eight, and eleven.
Yeah.
Because it doesn't give you that indicator or that option on the left-hand side there.
So because, that is because the accountability index is a whole.
Okay, it combines everything into.
What you're thinking about is called the, the DPI or SPI, which would be the District Performance Index or the School Performance Index, right? Is that a better way to explain?
So this is the average of the three grades together.
I could find the PowerPoint, and I apologize, I'm stumbling through this right now. I lost my PowerPoint. I don't know where it went. Give me two seconds.
It's not up there in the panel?
No, it's not. I'm going to pull it back up again. I apologize for doing this.
When we practice, it works like a tunnel. It's on those links, you see how they work.
I think I clicked out of it by accident.
The other thing too is, we've always talked about the goal as seventy-five percent, right? No?
No, so it's not a percent.
No, I know it's not a percent, okay. So strike that, strike that. We've always talked about the accountability index as being seventy-five, period. Okay? The, the number hundred has never been used, and we're told seventy-five is not a percent. It's an index value. But when I look at the graph, and again, this is EdSite, this is not us, this is EdSite, the top line is a hundred. So ideally, they make it look like a hundred is as high as you could possibly go. But in other words, the state will settle for seventy-five.
Well, I think that's the target, it's eight, so at the accountability index is eighty-five. I know, see, there's a ton like of.
Right.
So the accountability index is eighty-five, where the DPI that Mr. Corcoran was just asking about, that's seventy-five. So that's specific.
Okay, that's what I'm thinking about.
Yep.
Because sometimes we have these numbers, you know, we say, okay, seventy-five, not percent, it's just seventy-five. And people automatically think a hundred, but you know, that doesn't necessarily have to be so when you're creating an index. It could be that seventy-five in fact is the optimal. But on their chart, it has the hundred. And sometimes people goof in presentation, they'll show something on an axis that actually shouldn't, doesn't belong there. But a hundred actually would be perfection then, that's a real number that in a perfect world would exist.
That's the, yes, that is the.
Well, there are many districts like the New Canaan that I knew and loved for twenty-two years that are way above the.
So for, so for seventy, whatever that unit is or non-unit is, we're set seventy out of the hundred. And it would be useful to see just exactly who would be close to the hundred, if anybody's close to the hundred. What is real life?
I've ever seen anyone close to a hundred, but that's.
In the eighties.
Yeah, higher eighties.
Yeah.
Okay.
So another link as an example would be for chronic absenteeism. So again, remember, whenever you go onto the site, you really want to be going on with a question or a purpose. So if you wanted to compare or look at our chronic absenteeism as an example, we would just find the school we wanted or the district we wanted to look at, which in this case, we're going to look at Groton. And then you can, if you look over here, and again, this is just to orient you to the site, there is so much on here. I just want to give you some little nuggets, some bite-sized, you know, ideas. But you can filter here, and you can see you can filter by anything from free and reduced lunch to students that may be classified as special education gender. And then you can pull up that chronic absenteeism to see what that rate is. So as a district, for twenty-four, twenty-five, and no, right? This is up to date, so this is the most current. It's not, we're not waiting on this to be factored in for this past school year. So this information is available, and we are at twenty point one percent chronic absenteeism this past year.
Which is up from our eighteen.
Could you define, and I'm, I'm sorry, I don't want to take over. Could you define for our new member, if he doesn't already know, how we define chronic absenteeism?
Chronic absenteeism is ten percent of the total school days. So that changes. So as an example, just to kind of help you picture this, at day ten of school, if you've missed two days because you were sick the first two days or you didn't realize there was school, right? You're, you're considered chronically absent. But as more, if those are the only two days you've missed.
It's the whole year.
Right, as more days accrue, your number, you're no longer chronically absent if your absences aren't increasing, right? So that's how that works.
And that's excused and unexcused.
Chronic absenteeism covers everything.
Okay.
However, if your child is absent two days every month, you know, all of a sudden, by the end of the year, you're chronic. So it's like, we really have to pay attention to days off, and, and yet the state actually provides mental health days as well. But they're not free, they're not keeping you from being chronic. So, yeah.
Not here is not here.
Not here.
And so then another link that you all have access to, and actually, I want to revisit what you initially asked me, which was, does the public have access to all of these? And the answer to this for communications and climate is no. And the reason for that is all of these other links link you to EdSite public, which is a public-facing dashboard. Our communications and climate information data comes in, it's from in-house. So if you have a Groton Public Schools email account, you do have access to this, but not all of the public does. So you as a board do have access to this information.
Well, what we're trying to do is present this information to you in bite-sized pieces so that when those presentations have been done for the board, then we can also post it for the community so that they would see this aspect.
So this is at this time, this would be the one column. And you can see, as an example, this would link you directly to our climate survey results. That's what we're done again during the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. And the highlighted question represent an important piece, which is our strategic plan, the pillars of that. How are we measuring? What are our key performance indicators? And so the yellow highlighted questions represent those KPIs or.
Can you read an example of that?
So as an example, there are trusted adults in the school who I can phone to for personal or academic support. So again, that speaks to our culture and climate pillar.
And everybody's working on this, elementary, middle school, and high school.
And it is broken out for you so that you can kind of tease it out a little more, your secondary versus elementary climate surveys. And again, if you wanted to look deeper at it or had questions about it, I'd be happy to answer that.
Do you know what grade the climate study starts for elementary?
It's K, so it's K-12.
K-12, okay.
And so they're broken up, so in the elementary level, we have two different surveys. We have an early elementary survey and we have an upper elementary. And it's really just age-appropriate, the questions and the look of it, that's really the difference. But they are the same questions.
And then just to clarify, we are going to have a meeting on that, almost where that's just an agenda topic, correct? So we're just, we're just touching on, on how to navigate some things tonight. But we're not going in depth on that. So because the, the climate surveys normally like a one to two hour presentation where the board asks a lot of questions.
Right? So then we have talked about whether or not, how, how to actually present that. Does it make more sense presenting it within, so the school improvement plans? And when the schools come to report, does it make more sense for them to speak to it? Specific to their school versus, you know, how we will sit around the table and we just throw it at you and here's like big picture? So I don't know, those, those were just some of the thoughts we had. You know, we were throwing around like, what would be the best way to do it so it's efficient? So it makes sense so that we can kind of target what it is we're looking at. So just putting it out.
And how it, and how it shows up in their plans, right? In their improvement plans, they're specific.
And again, you do have access to all of this as well. So we might even want to consider taking a look at it and then creating questions around the information you're looking at. I think it's a, another discussion, like how you want to see it. Happy to do it however, whatever makes sense for the board.
All right, yeah, I mean, Mike?
Yeah, just quickly, so those four metrics in the communications climate, that, that's, it's being reported to the state, right? Is, do, oh, those aren't? Okay.
I'm really sorry.
That's for our internal use.
This is for, this is in-house, so this is not reported to the state at this point.
Oh, so that answers, my next question was, does that get fed into the accountability index? The answer is therefore, no.
Not yet.
Yeah, but.
Not yet.
Legislation, Denise was actually here to speak to it a little bit more, so at this point, it's a not yet.
Well, there, there was always supposed to be, the, the state was supposed to come up with this comprehensive survey. We've been waiting and waiting, and it never really came to fruition. So we've, but we were kind of shown what the questions were that we should be asking. So we created our own in-house as every district. So until they come up with their own survey that they want to distribute to all the districts, so it's comprehensive, concise, and same for every district, you know, we're still waiting on that.
Thank you.
Just trying to get us back to where we were, I apologize. And so just going back to this, EdSite public is this public-facing data dashboard that houses a substantial amount of information that comes directly from Groton Public Schools and our CIS. We work very closely with them.
And this is, I'm sorry, this is the landing page, though.
Yes.
EdSite.
Yep, so this is the, the landing page. If you wanted to start at the initial page and then work from there to see the different, you know, what specifically you want to look at, whether it's students, whether it's educators, whether it's performance versus attendance, that's the landing page that will get you there.
Is it, is it possible to show us what the landing page looks like for one of the schools or maybe the high school or something like that? Just, so I think most people, if they just Google EdSite, they're going to click on Groton School District, and then they're going to pick their school. But if, if for today, we can just pick the high school or middle school, because they're, they're kind of encompassing, just to, just to give a quick. But if, if for today, we can just pick the high school or middle school, because they're, they're kind of encompassing, just to, just to give a quick overview of what's there.
Well, so the landing page for EdSite looks just like this. It's an, it's a new face that it has. And from here, you could go to a number of different areas. So I think what you're asking is.
Oh, report cards.
So the report card will bring you to, again, the um, this is the one we looked at together last time.
Last year, at the end of the year?
It was maybe mid-year, beginning. It was earlier in the year, I believe.
This, this to me seems like the, the summary, if somebody was just curious on how this school was doing with ELA and third grade. Or, or what, or overall.
And you'll see twenty.
So this seems to be the most. The most condensed information if you don't want to spend weeks on EdSite.
It's, it's uh, it's succinct information. It's an overview. This to me is something, if, if someone was to ask me. How can I look up information? I'm looking to move, what kind of place do I want to go to? What are the schools like? This is where I would send. Cause it is, it's a, it's a sweeping broad stroke. The problem with this um in terms of. As a board, your use um would be that it is static information, right? So it's not updated as frequently as. Let's say the other, other pages that I just shared.
And it's a whole year old at this point.
In some cases it is, it is, but.
Well, this is up to, this is up to date for um for performance for last, it's got all the. It doesn't have uh the DPI, but it's got all like the individual.
So what you could look as an example, right? Here's Charles Barnum, quick overview. And again, this is the one we went through last year. If you just want it all, like a one-stop shop, this is the best place to go for sure. Um, but you can't, you can't filter the information here. What you get is what you get.
Yeah.
But I know as a board, you typically will have questions that um you might want answers to, like those comparisons, right? So just to give you that tool that if you wanted to go and look, it is available.
All right. So you want, can you just scroll down just so, just so we can hit what the topics are that are here? So. Stu, do you want to talk this, about this? But students, it talks about our population. Educators, talks about the teaching staff, certified staff, non-certified staff, all of that.
Instruction um talks about spending expenditures, um time with disabled peers. Um, and then our performance, which is really the nuts and bolts of where we will head um in a few minutes, right? So notice again, here's twenty-three, twenty-four. It's not quite ready for the twenty-four, twenty-five, doesn't have that information yet. But it does give you the trend.
Oh, is that because we're on district as a whole and not individuals?
I think this is Charles.
This is Charles.
Oh. Oh, I thought they were all updated.
No, not on this page, not yet.
As they're releasing the information, they're putting it on?
Not on this page. Um, this usually comes. A little bit later, like so here, so our free reuse is up there. So we do have that. So certain pieces, again, will be enrollment has been up to date. Chronically absent is up to date, but the performance is not at this point.
They take it down? I could have sworn that I saw it.
If they did, I did not see it. I did not.
When I look, I know we had ELA, cause I looked at ELA and math scores on.
On here, on the report card.
You might find it somewhere like.
You're gonna find it somewhere else, not, not here, but we'll find, let's find it for them. It'll be a treasure.
So, so I'll just make a quick statement that per pupil expenditures is counted by the state differently than what we need to do for our budget. So the budget time, those two are never gonna match up and it's for logical reasons.
Now that we have reached, she was able to get every grant in and that bumps up our per pupil spending, because all those do-deas were added in.
Okay.
So.
The problem I have with that, it's done with every school district that I can think of, that I'm an expert, but. You take the number and you divide it by the number of students you have and you go, there you go, so much per pupil. When in fact, we all know that a ton of our costs don't scale that way. But that's the.
That's an average.
I always take the per pupil expenditures with a grain of salt.
And so Adrian, this is probably the page. Is this looking like it to you?
Where did you go?
So, I apologize. So under assessments.
Yep.
I went to smarter balance and I went to achievement. And this will have for you. And at this, you can sort and filter, which is nice. Okay, so here's state in Connecticut.
And can we add Groton to the state?
So no, this, on this page, again, right, it's this page you cannot have a side-by-side with another district.
That's why Lauren helps us make those great presentations, because she gets all those questions that we have. Like I want to see Groton, I want to see the state, I want to see Groton compared to our DURG, our neighbors, you know, what does it look like? So.
Oh, just parenthetically, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, no, I was just gonna say, I'm, I'm almost positive I saw it on the other. And maybe with the redesign, they pulled it out for a little while, um, cause that's, that, yeah.
But I wanted to add, just add parenthetically, if you don't know Sean, what a DURG is. You know what a DURG is? The D R G?
District reference.
District reference group. So they'll, the state collects and categorizes schools and it lumps them in a different. District reference groups, which are called DURG. I think we're in DURG G. It's an attempt to group schools according to. Economics, demographics, et cetera. Yeah.
Similar districts.
Again, with grains of salt, right? So we're often compared with Vernon, for example, even though it's not a neighbor of ours.
And so this is where you could find information specific to smarter balance. You can choose it by what you want to look at, subject. You can choose it again by, you know, one of the demographic groups uh or subgroups. Click on it and it will give you the information. But this is not um one of the pages where you could do a side-by-side comparison. Any other questions before, any other third place, like the ones? So as I was saying, it's important to go through um. Sites with a focus or a focus in mind. And I think it's important to share with you. How exactly we get. This information, how the CD, yes. It's a, it's a round ninety. Uh, how they get the information related to Groton Publics. Right. And so when I tell you, there is an enormous amount of information, data that's collected on a daily basis. Whether it's at the school level, um whether it's moved to the state, whether it's come back to us, we work side-by-side with the state. To ensure that the data that you're getting is timely and accurate and then published um for the public. Right? So what you see here is literally the process that um that we go through. To get that data onto that EdSite Public and onto EdSite Secure. Um, and it really begins at the building level, or I'm sorry, yeah, at the building level, as well as the district level and the day-to-day collections that take place. I'm not gonna go through all the steps, but basically, we collect it in, in-house and that's everything from attendance to coursework. To teachers, to um discipline, in-school suspensions, bus suspensions, you name it. We're collecting that information. And then at, at one point, there is, um, there are certain. Uh, dates that each one of these reports is due by. And so we do an initial submission. Um, and after that initial submission, we work with the Department of Ed uh to make any necessary adjustments. So let's say there wasn't, some of the information wasn't available through CT Sets, which is our special education. Um, warehouse, right? Like, so if it hadn't been uploaded there yet, we would have to make corrections. Um, we go through that process, then we certify it. Then the state gets a hold of it, um, and then after that, it becomes frozen where there are no more uh. Modifications or revisions can be made. And then from there, it becomes published to you. So it's a pretty intense pro- process that each report goes through. Let me just see if I want to show you.
Oh, yeah, there's all the dates.
These are what you see here at all the reports. That we work with the Department of Ed. To give them. And here are the dates. Right? When it's open, when the, we initially submit the information, when we have updates. And when it's completely frozen.
This information is available.
Oh, yeah.
So if somebody wanted to investigate, then why isn't it, we're looking at twenty-three, twenty-four? There's an explanation if they wanted to.
Yep, all of this, you can pull this right up off of the um Ed, uh State Department of Ed website. But it collects, as I said, everything from discipline to. Our language learners, the assessments that they take, to appeals process uh. To our food nutrition information, every department. And every school is responsible for a significant amount of data that eventually comes through here. We clean, we scrum, we send. They send back, we work together. It, and it's typically things like concurrent registrations, right? Where we have a student registered in Groton, but they're still registered in another district, which happens frequently with transient populations. Um, whether they didn't un-enroll in one district or um yet, right? So they maybe didn't un-enroll in that district or that district didn't know where they were, and then they popped up in ours so that we can sort through that. Figure out, okay, where is this student actually? So we don't lose kids in the process. So it's a whole system of trying to make sure our information is, again, timely and accurate.
And lots of checks and balances.
Lots of it, right?
It seems frustrating. It seems like it's so long. The staff actually sees the data now. Oh, so timely, like they'll see, they've given the tests and they can see how their kids did. You know, you get those results, but only um people who would have access to student data.
Just three people.
Yeah, well, the principal, the teacher.
Right.
Yeah, I, I, so just to go back a little bit, I did, I looked back at my email, because I re, I, I emailed everybody when data was, when the. ELA and math data and science data came up, it was on the report card page. So can we ask?
Why?
Somebody at EdSite, yeah, when it'll be put back on that page.
Yeah, I can ask that. Um, I know you, you beat the state in inform, you know, you, I'm impressed.
I knew it came out in August. That's why I was, and I, I wanted to look at the link that I sent to the, uh, just, just for the public to know. I saw the link came up and I sent a link to the board saying the new data is out. So um, but uh, but yeah, the, the link went to the report card. It didn't go to one of these other sites. So, yeah, if we could ask the state when that's gonna be backed, backed up, just because in my eyes, that seemed like. A much easier way to get a um, a view of the school, like an updated view of the school.
I'm, I, I don't know what is happening here and I'm really embarrassed and I apologize. There we go. I'm gonna keep this.
But you can't see it now. Yeah.
I might have a copy at all, but I can go all the way back.
Okay, and so, as we just saw, um, one piece of information that is up on EdSite Public. It's no longer embargoed is our district level um state assessment results. And so what you have in front of you. Is an overview of performance over time. Right now, you're looking at English Language Arts, three, forty-three. Okay, so this would be S back. Um, and you'll notice the different highlights represent cohorts of kids. So as an example, if you look at. ELA twenty-twenty-two, the highlighted yellow at fifty-two point six percent. If you follow that highlighted yellow over the years, that's the same cohort of, of kids. That's the same grade level of kids.
That's a quick procedural question. Uh, I'm absolutely okay with going through this. On, on our agenda, it just says data dashboard. The attachment has this. I don't know, are, are we kind of hiding that we're going through? Like, could it be perceived that we'd be hiding that we're going through this year's data? Without having it as an agenda item? That's my question. Uh, it's, it's clear, it's already in the attachment that's included in the agenda. The day, the agenda headings just data dashboard and we're, we're stepping away from the data dashboard at this point. I'm, I'm just asking.
It's so. I see what you mean. In my opinion, um, this is data from the dashboard, just organized slightly differently and we're not going into this. Uh, is, although I want to go into this, I don't, I believe that we're just talking about the data that came off the dashboard as an overview and we're gonna have. An in-depth meeting to go over these scores. Is that my, am I understanding things correctly?
Yeah, and I think that Anne Marie has also published um really uh comprehensive um. Look at it in a August twenty-ninth memo that was sent out. So this is actually part of that district data, looking at it over time. So just to give you kind of a, a, a look at both year-to-year and also cohorts.
Yes, thank you. And I, I appreciate the memo and I, and I appreciate these slides. It's actually, so I guess. Uh, maybe we're in line. Just want to make sure that there's a future agenda item at that meeting that we're, we're going through, through these results, because. You know, a, a student performance is.
Yeah. To me, yeah, to me, we need, we've got like four or five nights worth of meetings in this data. Uh, and I, and to my recollection of last year, we, we did, like, we spent an entire meeting talking about the climate survey, which. When the climate survey was done in what, May or something, April or May?
For the presentation or when it was administered?
It was administered.
Yeah, it was administered back in, until through, it was a, it was a window, don't mean you're, I'm trying to remember this, it was in April and May.
And I think that, i- if I think back two years, that might have been the end of August when we went over that. We had a whole meeting to talk about the climate in the schools, which. We had it, it's a much different time then, because we were, we were just out of that, that time when the schools were closed, so the, the climate is changing a lot, but. Um, but, so I, I'm taking this data at, like, tonight's meeting, as we're just kind of touching on it. Um, because this data came out on the dashboard, but I think it was in the agenda packet, accessible through the website.
Okay.
It's, I, I think it's in my, I, I mean, I don't know if anybody has a different opinion of it, that we're too far out of.
I'm, I'm with Mike that, as tempting as it is to get into the data, I, I think we should probably save that for. The meeting on the data itself.
Yeah, I agree.
But I don't want four or five meetings on S back. You meant broader?
I think it, one of the most interesting ways to showcase the data is school by school. And tied in with their school action plan. And, you know, what they've seen and what they're going to do about it, you know, what, you know, what's on the horizon. Or, and we know that this board has really, really supported the district in looking at. Um, reading through the science of reading lens, looking at it, elementary, middle school. Um, and, you know, that work is being done under Anne Marie's leadership and. The math is also being examined. Very carefully, and there are some pilot and some information that teachers are gonna try a lot of professional development around mathematics. Elementary and middle school and even high school. So um, that part we're really excited about. And we really think that that's gonna make a difference, even though this. Program in ELA is brand new. We feel like the teachers have really embraced it and have done really good work for the first year and going into their second year. And it'll get better and better, we think. Yeah, so.
I'm sorry, should I continue or is that like a good, are we stopping here? We don't, I miss, I'm not.
No, I, I think we can review the data um just broadly, because it's on the dashboard. And we didn't say that it was just the state dashboard, because I think we can also talk about um the district, like tying into the state dashboard. So are we gonna, we're gonna put this links into the state dashboard on our district pages, correct?
Which I'm not following, I apologize.
Are we linking some of the, um, like, so we've also talked about the dashboard for the schools. Are we linking, are, are we linking these two things together, this, the performance dashboard for the schools? I think that's actually a future agenda item, so I believe that.
Future, we've, we've talked about taking our presentations and making them more public facing on the website, so people can look at it. And then we haven't talked about it school by school, but we can certainly talk to the principals about how that could look.
I think that's on the referral tracking, isn't it? Just to.
On the, on each school's individual website, is that?
We'll talk about, it's on the tracking sheet. I don't have the tracking sheet with me, but I'm pretty sure it's on there. We'll talk about, it's on the tracking sheet, I don't have the tracking sheet with me, but I'm pretty sure it's on there.
So this is the ELA um English Language Arts performance per time, I mentioned, you know, the colors are coded uh. To yeah, to match cohorts over time. Um and you can see that based on this. Grades three into four and then grades four and five had increases in their overall growth in ELA. Um also, fourth grade from twenty-two. Um since twenty-twenty-two until now, um we're now back where we were. So we're making increases, we're going back up in the right direction. Um.
And it, we always use that twenty-nineteen benchmark. It's a particularly good year before COVID hit us. And then, you know, we had two years without real viable state testing. Nothing happened on the twenty-twenty year, we were all at home. And then you get back to twenty-two and and looking forward. At how kids are progressing and ultimately, we wanna get back to twenty-nineteen and beyond, wanna hit that target too. So this is just showing you hidden percents.
Yep, and so here is a SPAC ELA, I'm sorry, math performance over time, same thing with the color cohorts. Um, one thing worth noting, and remember, this is uh it's the percent of students meeting or exceeding benchmark. One thing worth noting is sixth grade to seventh grade um. Then twenty-four and twenty-five school year, they had an increase of twelve points, over twelve points. Um growth, that's an impressive um gain right there. Or.
Are there any questions on this slide before we move on?
I'm gonna hold them for another meeting, yeah.
All right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, all right.
If this piques your curiosity, I always love it if you wanna send some questions ahead of time and then we can actually. You know, plan our presentation around some of the questions that you have too.
Long as we don't hold in informal meetings online, that applies to anything, where we start to shoot. Messages to each other about stuff and we wind up effectively having that violates freedom of information.
Yeah, we could, we could uh.
Not that we've done that yet, but.
Send a question to the board chair and the superintendent.
Yeah.
Yeah, one way, yeah.
Or you can include the the vice chair, if you'd like.
Right, and and you have this information, so like I said, play in the sandbox, you know. Tap tap into those links and and check out what all that you can see there. Because that might also, you'll go in with a question, but it probably will also um promote other questions as you go through.
Right.
So.
For yeah, for me broadly, I'd like um us to, you know, focus on the uh challenges as well as highlighting. The successes, like for instance, some of those cohorts went up, some of them uh went down quite a bit. And so uh at least equal time, so that we can, you know, um. Put our our resources efficiently to helping improve the school system.
I mean, one thing that's been core is the state level data and our data in sixth grade. And yeah, they moved from elementary to middle school, but you know, we're really, really trying to get to the root cause of why is there such. A tremendous. You know, decrease.
Yeah, that was gonna be my, my question and something we should talk about, which is. A substantial decrease from fifth to sixth grade district wide in math and science. Or in math and, well, and in everything, and and obviously, middle school is just a big transition in itself, and that's probably. Um, big part of it, but maybe, you know. What we're planning on, you know, what we think it is and how we can improve.
Yeah.
Um, so this is our uh science assessment, generation science assessment. And just for your reference, it's only um given to grades five, eight and eleven. So that's why you see those grades present, um but you can still match those cohorts. Um, we see that in grade eight recognizing, right, that there. There's work that needs to be done there, there is a substantial uh dip. From fifth grade to science assessment to when they took it in eighth grade. And then from eighth grade to eleventh grade, they held there and there was a slight increase.
And one of the um areas, it's grade five. In twenty-twenty-four was right back at the twenty-nineteen percentage, which was good. And we slipped a little bit, but um you'll see school by school how there are so many differences, so. We're gonna tap into those success stories to find out how we can be successful across the district.
And Catherine Finowski, um Northeast and Thames River all were, uh they had some, some really impressive. Science scores. And so our SAT to the data, so this is the twenty-twenty-six cohorts or now seniors who took SATs last spring. Um you can look at over time how they progressed. Um and they've done a nice job um holding their own and then making some increases. So from beginning of tenth grade, when they first took it as a PSAT. When they took the true PSATs, the end of eleventh grade, you can see there's a six-point uh percentage increase there. Um year over year and and in relation to the state, we're above the state in performance time over time. And really, this is just our roadmap to success, right? So everything we do comes down to our strategic plan, how are we working and what are we doing um? To ensure our students and Groton Public Schools is successful. Um in order to do that, we have a district improvement plan that has been created. And off of that, school, individual schools have created their own improvement plan, which outlines the steps, the action steps that they will take. And make those gains always tying back to our pillars or five pillars. And all of those things are measured by the key performance index and the state, well, state data.
And it links to our principals' goals and um our teachers' goals too. Not necessarily, you know. Just the data, it could be culture and climate, could be other goals that they want to work on.
And so coming up will be the district and school presentations on the performance data as well as um improvement plans. So those are in the next, over the next several, really, the next two months, I think it stretches out.
All right, so do we have a plan, are we, is it on the schedule to talk about the climate survey?
I think um when you and Beverly and I meet, hopefully this week, look at the template, figure out what comes next.
All right.
Yeah.
Um because some of those, there was a lot of questions with how the data was um presented last year. Um in those meetings, so it would be great to look back at some of those notes. Um because I know, I know there were lots of comments, I think Dean actually had had a few on different ways um of understanding. So we'll say in the, in the categories of um approaching standards or meet standards, there's questions. That was, there's a huge range um in scores in that group. And is there a way to understand where the kids are in that group, are they almost at standard? Or are they further down, so like in in last year's meeting, that's just an example. But I think there was some, um I think there's lots of questions on um, on how the data could be shown differently.
Well, we get to the growth, that's what we really are looking at, what, every child has a target. And they're expected to grow, measurable growth. And so them knowing the targets, the teachers knowing the targets is really pretty essential. And you know, what is it that they didn't get the year before that we need to make sure they're getting this year? Um so there's a lot that goes into that analysis. And how close are they to the next bend, you know, like we wanna see the kids who are in the two range. Getting into the three, you know, you wanna see that measured growth so that you might not go from a level one to a level four in one year. But they could, you don't know, but you wanna see them grow over time.
Right.
Yeah, thank you for the presentation and assembling the the data. Uh it's helpful, um just I wanna make a statement about the uh Groton Public School Strategic Plan. Um, uh it's not been voted on yet by the uh Board of Ed. So we s- we still have to do that before it becomes effective, like we discussed it at the Cal meeting on June sixteenth uh this year. Um, but uh it was never voted on that I can tell. And then the the last one was voted on in a regular meeting of the Board of Ed. And uh May twenty-second, two thousand seventeen, so it's clear that um. It makes sense to me too, that that our our procedure is to vote on the new strategic plan, so I think we should have a vote on that. Not to, hey, we can't, it's a cow.
Remember it being voted on, but I guess it was in twenty-seventeen.
Yeah, I I looked, I just looked it up, yeah, uh it definitely is, and 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 it makes, obviously, to me, it's obvious that. The Board of Ed should vote on a strategic plan, because you know, we're the, we're, we're the strategic body, hopefully, of of um. Of the school system.
We get to vote on Custodian Appreciation Day, I mean, we should be able to vote on our strategic plan.
Uh, but Custodian Appreciation Day might be more important, I would say, actually.
Not not gonna custodian, let me say, you know, we're more than just a ceremonial body.
Yeah, um, do you wanna make that referral to to Bev and CC me on it?
Uh I I I'll refer it, but I think we should do it, right?
Well, it's something that's been talked about a couple of times in meetings, so I think just putting it in an email as a referral for discussion.
Yeah.
And hopefully a vote. Um.
Yeah, I guess, so it's just a misstep, I think.
Um, could I just uh jump in real quick on that?
Yeah, go ahead, Ian.
I just wanted to voice support for uh Mike's suggestion and, you know, maybe that's something we just put on the uh agenda for the end of the month. Uh regular meeting, uh the September regular meeting. Thanks.
Yeah, I I definitely support the board voting on it as well, but. All right, any other discussion on the data dashboard? All right, we'll move on. The location of the robotics team. So who wants to?
Well, I can start, I think I wrote about it in board note um for you to talk about um. Our meeting with finance facilities, it was really facilities focused, and we actually did a walkthrough. At Fitch of the Automotive Center and the Woodshop. And another computer lab, a few other rooms, we were poking around and and checking out the facility. Um we had both coaches in attendance, Sherry Fakers and Chris Jenkins, um. Adrian joined us and the team, which was Dean and and um Jen and.
Jay was there.
Jay was there too. Um, and basically, um Chris Jenkins actually stated it, but I've said it before, that Fire Marshal um Ben Nowers. Was the one who is in charge of that Mary Morrison site, and he has been over there. And he had, from the start of us even looking at another site other than Fitch. Had said that Fitch High School is the only school that's appropriate and safe to house the Aluminum Falcons Robotics Team. Um and you know, he was pretty adamant about that, and so when we were looking at this space, one of the things that has happened is. Um the robotics has had the closed down PV space. For years now, I don't even remember when you moved them in there, when they moved in there, but, so they've been able to use a whole vacant school. Which, you know, um has not been in use except for their use. And I've always had concerns about them being out, because they, robotics team takes this serious, they work all kinds of hours. And so late at night, they always have mentors there. But they're in an old abandoned building and it's off-site and um. Kids have to drive there and sometimes they're driving late at night, and the new coaches though have really. Kind of brought it back and they've, you know, made sure that they closed off some empty spaces and they've kept it more in the gym and a couple other classrooms. But there were things that were happening prior to them coaching that were really concerning, so um we're still dealing with some of that. So I I'm always a little bit hesitant to put kids in a, build an older building and. Especially a closed down building where we're not sure about the atmosphere and the climate conditions and how safe it is um. To be actually physically in there, like I drove past SV Butler today just to see the grounds and, you know, it's. You know, I wouldn't go in there uh myself unless, you know, I knew that it had, you know, was okay, safe to go in. So there, we have a lot of questions still, I know that a Fire Marshal, um we did discuss that, we discussed other buildings that were closed down, like. Claude Chester and SV Butler, and Sam actually said that um. Clyde Chester, the gymnasium, doesn't have the supports that we'd need for um, you know, any kind of manufacturing. And I don't know that SV Butler would either, but we definitely have to involve the Fire Marshal. To see, to look in there, and I don't know, I guess I can turn it over to Sam, that's just kind of the introduction to our visit to Fitch.
He's gotta seem up, I think.
Oh, Ian, you have a question?
So thanks, just a quick note of a parliamentary privilege, I just wanted to call attention to the fact that both Chris and Sherry, the two coaches are in attendance and the attendees. Tonight, so if they wanted to, you know, if the conversation went that way, we could elevate them up to uh, you know, join as panelists and and engage in the conversation too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, yeah, can we um elevate them, I don't know who's back there, if it's Clint, um can we elevate them?
I'll do that.
All right, thank you.
Okay, Sam can go in the meantime, if you want to.
Um, yeah, so Sam, I guess you can talk about what we talked about in the, in the meeting on Monday. Um as far as the schedule and and the likelihood of getting, or when we could get robotics team into Fitch, if that's the plan.
Yeah, I I don't have a definite date yet, because I uh just saw the list of things uh that they want in that space and um. Where they would like in that space, I have to look at that a little more closely before I come up with a final date, but um. From what I understand, they need to be in there by the middle of October. Um and so we've worked to that end anyways.
We actually have a timeline that um Coach Fakers had put together. And um we've had several meetings, we we will continue to have, like weekly meetings um. To just assess the situation, see, I know they did a lot of packing over the weekend. And so they've, they really accomplished the goal, the goal, and there's probably a lot of boxes, so I don't know if you've been over there after the packing to see. What we're talking about, but some of the heavy equipment would have to have a specialized, we discussed the specialized. Moving company that we we would need to move the equipment over, so.
Earthways and milling machines are uh pretty heavy, that our guys wouldn't be capable of moving and uh. Uh while the robotics team did it, the last time they did it uh with um. Uh certain level of professionalism, um and. Uh I know of a couple of companies that I'd be talking to about moving that heavier equipment to the Fitch High School site, if that's uh where it's going to end up. At any rate, um. I've said, um, I I'll look at the plan, I I've seen that there are a lot of things that they wanna bring to Fitch High School and we have to. Uh discuss that with them as to exactly, uh definitely exactly what they need in the space in order to operate immediately. Uh with some things maybe being held aside, uh due to space constraints, et cetera, or power issues, but. Um power issues, we can resolve over a period of time, but uh. Um, we'll be able to set things up fairly quickly, I mean, we still have a lot of uh moving out of that space, uh stuff to move out of that space, we're. Um purchasing a container for some of the uh some snow removal women. I know that went through this morning, um so um, once I have a date on that. Uh then we, and then we can step out of that, uh the hot space so that we can make room for them.
Right, so do we, so do do we have at this point a date when the space will be clear or or it's just still unknown?
I I don't have a definite date right now, but I will, I mean, we will be done in time to get them in for whatever date they say they have to be there, which. What my understanding right now is they need to be in there operating by mid-October, so.
All right, I thought it was a little bit more, but maybe we can ask Sherry, but first, I'm gonna um, Jen has a question and then Dean.
Um, yes, so when we met, um we had asked for a schedule. Um it looks like we do have one, I was wondering, can you share some of the key dates? Um, as to when they need to be in, um I know Sam just mentioned that. Um we still are waiting for the container, cuz um. I guess it just got approved this morning, so I don't know, um what's the timeline for a container to be delivered? what's the timeline for a container to be delivered? So if you could, if you have that information, would like to know that information. Um, and with the exception of the snow removal materials, have all other items been removed or are in the process of removing? Um, I think those were filters, um, paper boxes, et cetera. So can I get a status update on that? Thank you.
Yeah, when I have a timeline, I'll give it to you. I'll be in touch with.
Yeah, Matt had some responsibility in there of um working with the department chairs to get the paper loaded up and I think the air filters, it's probably like custodians. Okay, so um, we're, you know, I've got a week by week list that Sherry has shared with me. Um, you know, clearance and coordination kind of um this week um move schedule and communication, like trying to really orient and figure out when the move is going to take place um. And then, you know, executing by hopefully the end of this month. So, you know, we're working on that to get that done in three weeks, four weeks.
Yeah, I I thought we had a much more, um, I thought the schedule was a little they were going to try to get in there a little quicker from the meeting last Tuesday.
Well, that is what I received from Sherry.
I have limited uh resources.
Yeah, which I thought we were going to have a schedule Friday or something.
Between absenteeism and uh others out for other reasons, so um we're dealing with that as well. Uh, as far as um an alternate site, which has been talked about um, as far as uh SB Butler's concerned, um, I I don't believe that we should do anything about SB Butler. Certainly before we even had a ruling from a fire marshal in that district as to whether he would allow it in the building in the first place. Um, I know Corning Bridge has already said that we couldn't have it in Mary Morrison. The city of Groton has allowed it in Pleasant Valley, um, probably because it was there before that fire marshal got there. I don't know. I don't know the timeline of when he started over there, but it's been there as long as I've been there uh for the most part. Certainly, if we're going to move it to another site uh outside of the high school, which is not preferential, but uh if that what needs to be done do anything without uh uh ruling from the fire marshal.
And I just don't, I really want the kids to have a home base. I don't want them moving like this you see is tremendous cost. And manpower, woman power and getting it done, the job done. I don't want them to, like me being the Navy junior, move every other year with this kind of equipment. Dad thought it was hard enough the way he did it with eighteen thousand pounds, but um, you know, I just really want them to to have a home base and to be, you know, in a good situation where they can be safe and secure at their own high school. But we can certainly, you know, if the board wishes us to to look into this, we could have the fire marshal. I just don't know who would want to walk in without knowing the condition of the building.
I ha- I I have to, it'll be Dean, then Ian, then Mike. Um, I have to assume that town must check on the building once in a while. I mean, I I can't imagine that they just shut the doors and mothball it.
Well, they're heating it and I at one point, I don't know if the fire department is still good, but they were doing training in there on a monthly basis and um I'd have to check with the fire marshal.
I mean, if that's an, if it's an option. Yeah, if it's an option, to me, it seems that um we would just explore it and maybe just that's a meeting with you and the fire marshal and the coaches of the robotics team to see if it's even a viable option. Um, and I don't know if the coaches of the robotics team have any um thought on that, but just thinking before we do the move, we might as well weigh our options. And and maybe it's just not a viable option because the fire marshal and we can just dismiss it and move on.
Fire marshal go in there with him and see whether he was by or not.
I mean, I guess uh we should ask, we'll see what the, we'll finish the discussion and then we'll see what the board feels about that. Dean?
So couple of things. One, uh, I haven't spoken with the Quanah Bridge Fire Marshal about this. Um, I can imagine, I already know, I don't have to imagine, that he put the kibosh on the use of Mary Morrison. And whether variants could be gotten or not, or the answer is no on Mary Morrison because of the lack of a sprinkler system and 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 it would be uneconomical and it wouldn't even, we couldn't even do it in time uh to get the season rolling for Mary Morrison anyway. So that's the end of Mary Morrison as an option. I don't know why the fire marshal would have said, oh, you should go to Fitch, Fitch is, even though Fitch is still within its district, why Fitch is the better option. I don't think it's for the fire marshal to have said, this is where the robotics team want to go. It is within his purview to say uh, yeah, Mary Morrison is out unless you have a sprinkler system. I can see that. So I I'm I'm not sure about a recommendation from the fire marshal as to where they should go. Now, as far as where they should go, my impression from the meeting last week was they needed to move yesterday, quote unquote, yesterday, maybe not with the quotes. Uh, so now I'm hearing mid-October. I mean, ultimately, it's up to them, it's their schedule. But it seemed to me that we are past the point where um we should be looking at SB Butler. I mean, if SB Butler works, that's great, but at this point, it's September, what, September eighth? And, you know, we will talk to the fire marshal and 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 miss the Mystic Mystic Fire District. You know, we will look at it and we will send an advance team in and we will send the Chernobyl commandos in or whatever. Got to go in SB Butler to take a look at it before the the rest of us look at it. I think we're past that. Uh, be great if it worked, I suppose, because it was obvious the need for clean out uh rooms in in Fitch. But we've been talking about this for a long time. Um, and I was expecting a schedule of some sort by Friday. I don't run this thing, I was hoping, but I have no power. I'm just, I'm impotent in that respect. I was hoping we'd have a schedule by Friday. We don't. And you know what? At the end of the day, if the robotics team is cool with whatever's going on, that's fine, that's their business, but so I don't want to be outraged on their behalf, but um, I am not happy for what that's worth. I am not happy where we are. It's September eighth. And this has been a topic for a long time. Uh, you know, I think we all knew where they were going to come. I know Fitch wasn't necessarily their favorite place because you know, uh, because the rooms are spread out. But it seems to be the only physical option that's available. Um, can't stay at Pleasant Valley. Mary Morrison's out. SB Butler's a big question mark. Uh, Claude Chester isn't out because it's structurally unsafe for what they want, structurally inadequate for what they want for their purposes, so that's out. Um, so again, September eighth, here we are and and what I'm hearing frankly is more of the same, which we which is you know, we'll get back to you. Uh, now I want to, now I want to hear from the robotics.
I just said we have a schedule.
Okay, all right.
After our meeting, which was the end of the week. So, doing the best we can.
Adrian, could I uh jump in?
Done?
Am I up yet?
Yeah, I'm done.
All right, yeah, go ahead, Ian.
Oh, yeah, I just wanted to uh to uh align my comments. I'm not going to reiterate all the points that Dean made. But I agree a hundred percent with his analysis and his uh i- i- his frustration, I guess, what I'm reading, a frustration with the lack of urgency that we're sensing here. Um, I also had the feeling that we were much further along in coming to a solution. Um, I heard, you know, some stories that that, yeah, they they had found space at Fitch. I'm presuming that the fire marshal um basically gave the okay at Fitch because Fitch has the fire suppression systems that can handle such an event. I believe it's the auto shop area that that we're looking to populate with the robotics. Um, again, I, you know, I I heard, I would want to see a timeline. Um, and 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 whatever resources we need to dedicate, let's get this thing done. Um, it has been lingering for quite some time. I think we need to attach a lot of urgency to this. Robotics team is is operates at a high level. Um, they're well regarded. They 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 do very well in competitions. Uh, they are great for, you know, skills and um, you know, technologies training. Um, so, uh, you know, I I I'm astounded and I definitely would want to hear from um, the uh, the coaching staff as to like what their ideals outcome is at this point. Um, I don't see the point in trying to find another temporary solution. Let's just double, triple down. Devote the resources that we need to get it done in time for them to have a successful season. Let's support them as if they were the football team or the baseball team or the basketball team. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ian. Um, Mike? Did you?
Yes, I did. Uh, it's just uh for the sprinklers at Mary Morrison, they've been talking about the portable sprinkler system. Um, at at some point, the fire marshal is going to be asked about that. Was he asked and did he say, no, that would not be enough?
He said no to Mary Morrison School completely.
And and was he asked about the portal sprinkler?
Asked about the portable sprinkler and you gave him the
I gave you the information.
Information.
Still said no.
Okay, um, and then uh it pleasant, uh, speaking towards like uh SB Butler or Claude Chester. Um, those are both under town control, they're town buildings, right, at this point? And um, as is um Pleasant Valley, Pleasant Valley, uh, though they've been using it for years, I did not find the climate to that to be a climate controlled area. It's very, very cold, uh, musty, um, it's not not somewhere that um I I want to have uh children in. Um, and so that that really needs to be if if we do explore these other options, that has to be paid attention to uh in a very important way. Um, uh, then I I'll just throw another option out. If you want to pursue it, you can, but there is the old Fitch Middle School, which is now the Groton Community Center. Um, it may or may not have space there. Um, and then um, the third thing though is uh, they also need at late, not not October, but later in the the season, they need uh, space, um, seems like gym space at time, like time in the gym. Is that something that's going to be afforded to them? Basketball season is.
Well, no, we were actually talking about laying out space right in that auto shop. Um, they can do a half field. Which is pretty comprehensive that they can use a half field. So instead of a whole gym, it would be like half size.
Will they, will they be able to use the gym if they don't?
Well, I guess, I mean, back in the day, they had a closet and they had the robotics, the robots, and they were going up and down hallways. So whatever we're coming up with is a lot better than those days. But, and I think, Sherry, you can answer this, but I think you might have taken them to the smaller gym and use that, but the problem is they would like to have a field space with that they can set up and use over and over again, not takedown setup, takedown. So that's what I was hearing, but I don't know. Sherry, you can correct me.
Oh, yeah, Sherry or Chris, do either of you have any comments on that?
Wait, when, while while we wait for them, while they were at Fitch, it was it was taking a lot of time from their uh, from their daily schedule to go from the space they were in to go down and set up because they would have to set up every night and then break it down each time too, so that school could continue on the next day. So that was one of the problems there at Fitch High School previously.
Yeah, I mean, from from my understanding, um, like it was very unworkable given the the level of the robots these days to go back to that model, like the setup and or at least it would be excessively cumbersome and burdensome on the um on the whole program.
Um, and and the the new spaces, the auto shop, the garage is heated, right? Yeah, just make sure.
All right, so um Jen, I see her. Oh, yes. Oh, yeah, Sherry, do you want to, I see your mic is on, you want to?
I'll wait till Sherry's done.
Okay, I'm just going to comment on the question of the the gym and um how the team needs to operate. Uh, when they were there before, the team was also much smaller. Um, and we weren't able to do half of what we're able to do now. So we have grown um tremendously since then and um have been much more successful with having our own space and being able to have a field. Um, so it would severely um impact, you know, how far we've come and the growth we've made for our students to not have that space.
Is is the is the auto shop in the entirety uh large enough for production and for the field? Or a practice field, I guess I would say?
It would be large enough for our machine shop and half a field, which we can certainly manage with. Um
We also talked about the wood shop because you said parents will do some of the work shop with kids.
Correct.
We looked at, and then there's a business department. They have other departments that we could use classroom space and you know, they would probably need computers. We saw a computer lab that's not used often during the day.
We've um, we've been told otherwise about that computer lab space, so um, I'm not really, I'm not sure. Um, I I guess there are classes going on there during open house. Um, there were teachers in there that said they run classes, so um, that is one question we have as far as those additional spaces. Um, where we'd be able to set up our business students, uh, because they do kind of need their own dedicated space. They do have a lot of equipment that would need to be set up. Um whereas our software students, they work off laptops. They could sort of sit in any space. They could use, you know, the media room or somewhere. Um because they don't have, you know, a lot of equipment they need to set up and and keep there. They basically work off laptops, but that business, um our business team would need some sort of space.
Okay, yeah, I think I remember you saying that.
So, but I, yeah, I think there's, I think we need to clarify though, um, that computer lab because it sounds like it is being used during the day.
Right, and and um, just my own opinion, but if we're talking about um turning the wood shop into something else that requires a whole different discussion on the wood shop first. Um, so um
I think they were talking about using the wood shop as a wood shop because they do set up and and have
Oh.
Yeah, they would use it as a wood shop.
In the, in the project.
Needs a little cleaning up, but.
All right, yeah, but so it still wouldn't be the machinery, the machining space. They'd still need a machining space.
No, yeah, you can't put the machinery in the same space as the wood shop.
Yeah, yep. Um, and then while we've got you, do you mind giving us and just reiterating um because now we've got everybody's in attendance for what your schedule is and what kind of the hard points are in your schedule, because um, just so we, I mean, so we don't, we'll just go back to kind of what you had stated in the meeting last Tuesday, um, for when your times are, when your recruiting is and when you need to get started with with certain things, just so we know kind of what your needs are for the program.
Yeah, so typically we begin mid-September, so we would be starting next week, bringing in our returning students to um, get our recruitment going, get the shop ready for open house. Um, we typically schedule our open house for the first week in October. So that we then invite any interested students and families to come in and see the space um and give a presentation on the team. Uh, after that, we have a window of a week to two weeks where new students um get registered for the team, get registered with First Robotics. And so that takes us to about mid-October where we then bring in all students who have applied and registered for and their families for a new member orientation meeting. And then that following week, so the end of October, our new students are are in and we start our um, we have yearly required safety training that we have to complete. Um, and then we try to get that all done by the end of October, so that November and December, we have two full months to properly train all students in their sub-team areas before we kick off our build season at the beginning of January. And then January through March, that's six weeks, you have about six weeks uh to get the robot design built, wired, programmed. Uh, troubleshoot, practice, drive team, um, practice uh before competitions start, which um are typically the beginning of March through mid-April.
All right, and um, I just wanted, because I was so impressed with this when we had talked about it. Um, so you'd start on the design of the robot and get it complete to a working model and is it six weeks?
It's about six. It's six to eight. It all depends on when our first competition is. Competitions start that first weekend in March. We want, we don't yet know um what competitions will be in. Uh, they have a preference selection that opens in the next couple of weeks, so we'll um, in the next several weeks, we'll find out what um events will be on. But so, yeah, so we could, if if we're week one, that would be the first weekend in March. So we always strive for six weeks. It could be depending on, you know, when our first competition is, it could be eight weeks, but we strive for six weeks. That gives us then um, two weeks to make sure our drivers are trained. We have time to troubleshoot and practice on the robot before our first um, our first competition. And it also gives us a little wiggle room because if we have snow days and we lose a day or several days um, that um, that puts us in a tough spot. So we, we really try to stick to that six week schedule.
All right. Well, well, thank you for that.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Um, Andrea?
Yes, um, I, I'm adamant that it belongs at Fitch High School and nowhere else. However, I'm unclear on exactly what, uh, uh, what is standing in the way of that happening. And, um, I, I want to know not if we can do it, but how we're going to do it to accommodate this. And, um, I'm just unclear on exactly what it is that's standing in the way. I hear a lot of things, but.
So we do have a detailed list from Sherri, um, she had created about week one, which is this week, the next week, the third week.
Yeah, that's a schedule.
It's a schedule of what needs to happen. So they had to finish packing Pleasant Valley. So they spent all weekend, I think, and then they've got to go back. So they have some more packing to do. We have to call, um, the moving company that is capable of moving these really heavy pieces of equipment and figure out when to get them in. There's a few things that Sam has to remove. I mean, they've done a great job all summer. They've worked on this place. If you could have seen it before, you know, they got rid of a lot of stuff. So there's a few other things, um, but doesn't mean that we couldn't start bringing some things in once we get the moving company.
Um, do we have the space? That's my question. If we don't, what are we going to do about that? How are we going to ensure that we do?
Once we clear the garage out, there is space. Um, but it's also the space that is going to be used for the new, uh, shop that Electric Boat is going to be putting in. And so, um, man, it's like it's a temporary move until that's built. We'd have to go somewhere else in the meantime.
Well, I don't know that we would, but we, we do have a consultant working on this project who will be coming down next week, I think, to take a look, to see how we can do both.
So in other words, then.
Getting them in there is, is cleaning out the rest of the garage and then moving stuff over. Then, uh, running an electric boat or whatever else we have to do is set up machinery.
Okay. So what I'm hearing then is that they will go to Fitch High School.
They're going to Fitch High School, yeah.
Okay. Well, we've been asked though to look at, bring the fire marshal in to look at S P Butler. So I, I don't know.
He identified it, right?
Sorry.
He identified Fitch High School as the place where it should go.
The fire marshal who's responsible for Mary Morrison.
Did he do that?
Did say.
Yeah. Fitch High School. He, I, I, I thought I heard you say he was the only place to go.
Frank was in that space and, uh, he was amenable to a moving year.
I thought maybe, did I mishear you? I thought I heard you say, Sam, that he said it was the only place to go.
I didn't say that. I don't, I don't think I said that.
Well, he, he did say Fitch High School is the best, most appropriate.
The superintendent said that.
That was what he told us, that it's the most appropriate space. The others were K five.
The fire marshal was always the fire marshal.
Could I just get a point of information there? Um, uh, a point of information. Um, the, when you say the fire marshal suggested that space, is it because there's fire suppression equipment already in place? Is that the reason?
Yes.
Okay. So that takes away, that, that, that solves a problem that, that the other places all have. And the other question I have is who is suggesting S P Butler? And why is that getting injected in at this late hour? I, I think we should just, we need to focus on one solution and get it done.
So we, we had that meeting. We had parents, we had students, we had board members, we had community members and we, they were throwing around some other ideas and, um, they had mentioned Claude Chester again, which we were told absolutely was structurally not capable. And then the, the question came up about S P Butler, you know, and so I think that was, um, brought to our attention.
Ian, I, I brought up the idea of S P Butler because I have concerns that the robotics won't be able to fit in the same space as the manufacturing center. So this may be another temporary solution going, because it, well, it is going to be temporary because they're going to set up and then they're going to have to adjust around whatever that becomes if we change the manufacturing center. So my reason for bringing up, um, using Butler was maybe that could be a longer term solution, or at least more than a year or two. Um, it, because it to, what I had gotten from other meetings is that robotics really won't work well if manufacturing, if they, if manufacturing is in the same space. And I assume that they're going to lose the fields with manufacturing in the space, which is a big, big issue from, from my understanding.
Okay. I have some more questions, but I don't want to jump anybody else in line. Send in some other hands for raise.
Let me, um, let me, yeah. Jen still has a question and then Jay, and then we'll go back to you, Ian.
Yeah. So we need to, we need to promote Jen again. She dropped off. So, um, Mark, if you could promote her again to bring her back.
Don't worry about me.
All right. Oh yeah. We, did we finish with you?
No, I'm, you, I'll, I'll wait for everybody.
We can go back. I don't know if we actually ever finished. So I should have asked you. So if you have more things, let's, well, you've, you waited a long time. So.
Thank you. Well, I heard the superintendent say that we don't want to do this again. And I heard, um, Adrian, I just heard you say, use the word temporary. So again, the superintendent, uh, indicated that it's at high cost. And of course we don't want to um, inflict that on my, on the taxpayers. So that's why, um, I'm, I'm adamant about it being at, at, at Fitch and keeping it there and because at, when we sell, um, S P Butler for apartments, as it were, it's going to come back to us again. And that's why we have to find a permanent solution at Fitch. So that's all I have to say.
Is Jen, is Jen back up? Jen, did you?
Yes, I, yes, thank you. I ended up getting disconnected and then having to join, rejoin. But, um, um, I do concur with what Dean had said. Um, because I thought we would be further along. We, I thought from the finance and facilities meeting that we were going to try to get them in by the end of the month. Um, so coming up with mid-October, um, I think it's late based on what was communicated there. Um, I'm not sure if Sherri or Chris is still, but if they're in agreement with that mid-October, I'd like to hear them say that. Um, but I thought we were trying to get them in for September.
We know that they have to be in by mid-October, but we do have to rely on a moving company. So it really is at the, you know, at the, uh, need to get packed up and get them moved over. So, um, I know that Sam was going to reach out to this moving company. We finally figured out who moved us before. So, um.
Okay. So even if we call, right? Cause they're probably busy. So we call, we set up a date, right? Um, maybe it is mid-October, whatever the drop dead deadline is, but we can't wait till October to call.
No, we're not going to wait till October.
Okay.
No. The next thing on our list, but we have a list and Sherri was very good about putting together a com- comprehensive list. And I can certainly send it to the board if they're curious about what the list says.
Yeah. No. Okay. So, um, I'm probably going to send the note again to Bev to ask her to, for a status update for next week as well, so that we could just keep pushing this along.
That's fine.
Okay. Thank you.
And I did put it in board notes, so I'm happy to do that as well.
Yep. No, I saw it. But I think it's just better if we do it, um, at either our cow, you know, like our meetings. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Jay?
Yeah. So I just wanted to say that when I was at the, the meeting and, um, the idea of S P Butler came up, um, I agreed that it is another temporary solution, but so is where we're moving it at Fitch. Because they're going to have to be moved out of there for the conversion to the manufacturing center. And so they're all temporary and ob- obviously we all want something permanent eventually. Um, but, um, of course it's completely up to the town council. I mean, the town council would have to agree to let us use that space and then we would have to pay. Um, but my idea was rather than move them in and out of the auto shop, I don't know if that's the idea that you had when you suggested, you know, just let them, if it is approved by the council, go and get this manufacturing space finalized before we bring them back to their permanent home. But you know, obviously there's a lot of questions. The fire marshal may walk in and say that the facility isn't appropriate. I don't know if it's any better sprinkled than than Mary Morrison or not.
Shannon has the group that's putting the ideas together with E B and the consultant. I think meeting next week. So to do another walkthrough of that space and to, to look at it because the vision was always to have manufacturing center for students to learn by day. And then you could certainly use the space for robotics in the, you know, after school. So, you know, we just have to work out the details, but there, like I said, there is a, a wood shop. There's, um, and I know they told us otherwise, but there was a computer lab. So it, it might be just a scheduling issue. Cause I don't think it's used all day long. It's used for a period or two. And, and wood shop is only used for one or two periods. So.
And, and just so, um, everyone here understands robotics, um, there's a lot of setup time. Um, and some projects take multiple days. So there's concern that that model may not work, being a manufacturing center during the day and robotics in the evening. Um, because if it takes two hours to set up a lathe, to start milling a piece, and then they can only work on it for an hour and then have to disassemble it to get it back. But that, that becomes very cumbersome for robotics. So that, that was.
And they have their own machinery, but in this plan with, um, E B, we're looking, they're going to help us with grants to get new updated equipment. So that those would be probably what the kids would use by day in the courses, so that they would have their machines separate.
Problem though, if the, if the, if the class, if the students in this class during the day are setting up to run a, uh, on, on one of the CNC machines that, that takes the time to set it up. It may be a three or four day project on that machine. And if robotics wants to use that particular machine, so they're going to have to work that out if they're going to use the same equipment.
And we might have multiple pieces of equipment through this grant, so that that would be doable.
Adrian, uh, can I take my turn now or is Jay done?
Yeah, Ian, Ian, and then Mike.
Um, yeah. See, so this is part of my frustration with this whole situation is that I feel like we already had this conversation and I feel like we already heard that it was, it basically was not a tenable solution to have manufacturing and robotics share a space. And I thought we're moving towards a, 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 a separate solution, like where, where there would be space for the manufacturing. I don't understand why we keep coming back to this idea that was already pretty much discussed and debunked, stating that, you know, for all the reasons that everyone just said, you know, the manufacturing program is going to have a lot of preset up and multiple day projects. I understand how that works. And I respect that. And, and the robotics are going to be in the same camp. You know, so they're going to have their own inherent like infrastructure where, where I don't see, I, I don't understand why we keep coming back to, um, this, this inherently unstable and tenable shared space solution. Let's, you know, when I heard that, that, that we're looking at the auto shop, you know, my understanding was that that was going to be the dedicated space, that the half field setup was the compromise the robotics team was making in order to, to, to take their space and then we're making work in Fitch. Uh, maybe that's my misunderstanding, but like I, I, there, there's so many moving parts here. I think we really need to get things like hammered down and written out so that everyone understands exactly what's happening. So there's no confusion about computer labs, no confusion about wood labs. And, and I don't want to see the manufacturing program and the robotics program share space or mix equipment because I just don't, I just see problems occurring because they're going to be doing two different things all the time. Robotics is all robotics all the time. Manufacturing, they're going to be doing different projects with different classes, you know, and, and, and I don't want to have the instructors of that program in conflict with, you know, the, the robotics team or vice versa. Like it's just, I, I, I don't don't understand why we keep coming back to that. So I, I would really need, we need to move away from that and start mapping out, how can it work in separate spaces, however adjusted. And is, is the manufacturing, um, is that a thing that's happening imminently? Or it sounds like it's still like in the planning stages? Thank you. Can I get an answer to that question?
It's absolutely in the planning stages. That's exactly where we are.
So it's still like a year or two down the road?
Consultant who will be out here next week, working with the team. So, and she's got a very detailed plan.
Okay. So the robotics team, is there a space at Fitch that could be a hundred percent devoted to robotics? Even if it includes only a half a field for practice?
We've looked at the wood shop and the auto shop.
Is that a space that could be a hundred percent theirs? I'm sorry. I missed that. What?
No.
I don't know that it could be.
All right. So we're, it doesn't sound to me like we actually have a solution in hand.
We have a temporary solution, I think.
Right. And, 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 but that just puts us back in the same loop again.
Well, we'll, we'll have more information when this consultant comes out to assess the situation because she's built these places before in Rhode Island.
What's the, right? So what's the time? When, when is the deadline for that plan to be submitted?
She is coming next week.
To survey? When is she issuing a proposed plan?
She, she has a, she has a plan of all the things that need to take place to create the manufacturing center. So, um, we're going to review that next week.
And, and so the moving company have, have they been contacted or we did, they've just been identified?
They've been identified. We met last week at another week.
All right. That's all I have for now. Uh, I just, I just again would urge urgency, like we owe it to the team to do better. And, and I just don't, it just seems like we, we never quite get traction with this, despite it being a known quantity for over a year and a half, two years.
We are putting that.
This change was going to happen.
We are putting them front and center. But we all had day jobs. I have to run the district. I've got to get buses in and out. I've got to make sure kids are safe and secure. That's what you hired me to do, but I'm also taking this very seriously. And I want our kids at Fitch High School to be safe and secure as well. Even though it's an after school program, it's a very important after school program. But we have to prioritize what gets done. And Sam has had a full plate in this place with less people to help him out. So I've got to look at the staff and what their priorities are. But we have actually got a timeline in the next three weeks. So you need to trust that we're going to do the very best we can do. And I need to run this district at the same time.
All right. So that timeline, uh, was that going to be shared? Just so we can get a sense, get some sense of like how far along we're moving and that we're staying on pace?
I can, I can, it's a Google Doc. I can share it with you.
All right. Please do. Thank you.
Does that include all the machinery up and running, that timeline by the end of October? Like installed and running?
It's got to be run before the end of October.
No, I know. It's from mid-October. Seems like it's possible, although much later than desired.
I mean, by the third week.
But fully installed and running so they can do their safety training in October. Is that?
Yes.
All right. Just a quick note, parliamentary privilege. I, I, again, I just have to, um, I'm sorry. I just have to step away. Um, I'm not going to be able to join for the rest of the meeting, but I thank you all for the information and, um, I, I would encourage, you know, just, I've already said everything I got to say about it. And I hope we get to a resolution, uh, sooner than later. Thank you all and good night.
Thanks, Ian. Is there anybody else? Mike?
Yeah. So when the consultant comes, um, is part of the design parameters that you're giving them shared use with the robotics team? That's good. Um, even though we've heard of the obstacles for that, uh, but my other thing is, um, is there some certainty we can give the robotics? is there some certainty we can give the robotics team? It's crushing to me to hear it's a temporary solution. And that they'll be without a home again, but they can count on having it for this season, I would think, right?
And I think it to be a permanent solution. So I'm hopeful that this consultant will be able to help us make that happen.
Okay, and but then is is there going to be a manufacturing center being constructed next school year? Because even when it's constructed, I would think there'd be a problem like, but basically, how many? So this school year seems like it's a guarantee that they would have the space. Next school year, next season, is it a guarantee for them or is that up in the air?
I don't think we have a schedule for an electric boat yet on that.
Is it plausible that it'd be a horizon for next year? The the program would start next year or the construction?
Start building the manufacturing center.
I think it took Coventry two full years though, before it was fully accessible.
Yeah, so my concern is like the accessible part, right? But but when it's starting to be built, I would, I would think that there would be no activity during that time, right? So like no one would be able to use it.
And there's still some question, that's the whether, for instance, it's some questions whether they're going to build the mezzanines and have some classrooms, some space up above in that area, whether that can be done or not. So that hasn't been determined yet. Again, you're building a mezzanine. It was on cheap, number one, and 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 again, nobody's going to be working underneath that while you are you working in there. So while that construction is going on, I would say it would not be operable, so.
Yeah, so that that's like.
It would be nice if if they did the construction of the manufacturing center after robotics is done, but I don't, I don't know what their schedule is.
Yeah, so that's that's my concern that this is a one season solution. And and then next year, we're going to be going through this again. This is not talk about the manufacturing center, but you know, could they build something new? Because the one in Rhode Island is beautiful.
Build us a new, build it and they will come fielded drinks.
They want to talk about that. I already have that planned right up here.
Yeah, yeah.
The band won't be happy because it would go where the band practices. The band would have to go all the way down to the football field to practice. What unit was that, Jay? I don't remember. You were there later, years later than I was there, so.
I don't know what we called it.
I don't remember what unit was there.
There were orbitals there.
There was one there when you were there, okay.
Yeah.
What kind of were the ninth grade wing is, right? Or the ninth grade wing was?
You know where the greenhouse is now?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It just beyond the greenhouse, up in that area out there.
So this was the reason in my own mind why the Butler idea was thrown out there because maybe it can be a short term solution for more than a very short term. We can talk to the town about it. If any, so what I was going to wait is for this discussion and say, but that this may be a waste of time talking about Butler. Unless
Fire Marshal.
Unless the fire marshal agrees. So if the board feels that we should talk about Butler, I would say the next step would be to see what Chris and Jer and Sherry think about that. And to have Sam meet with the fire marshal and see if there's space and and obviously all I think that if we're talking about Butler, at the same time, we need to be cleaning out the auto shop because we can't.
We're doing.
There's no time to slow down the plan for going to Fitch. But the Butler thing, especially if we don't have to put sprinklers in it, if if we just have to do some electrical that we can get done quickly. Maybe that could be a slightly longer term solution. Until we actually have a real space for robotics. So that so that's my thought and at some point I'm going to ask for to see what the board's interest in asking Sam to speak with the fire marshal and the robotics coaches.
Well, we can't vote here, right?
No, but we could do, how does the board feel? We don't have time to vote, but I think you could see how the board feels about about just instructing. I mean, this is a small thing. Well, everything's a small thing, right? When you when you have like, when you work 14 hour days. But yeah, go ahead, Mike.
Can we ask about the the Groton Community Center? Just I I don't, I don't know if it's got sprinklers or not, I must admit.
In Fitch June?
Yeah, exactly.
They, we've asked about gym space because they really need gym space. You know, they need something for the field. And those gyms are being used 24/7, I think, over at Fitch now, so.
That part, yes, but there's, there's many other spaces in there. I I mean, I'm just suggesting it because of its location and the fact that it is staffed at night when when people would be there, it's open. It 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 may just, it may just not work at all. Yeah, yeah, exactly. So.
Jay?
And that's exactly why I supported your idea last week to at least look at Butler. But I I think even before we bring in any fire marshal, we need to, obviously, we have to get permission from the town to even explore the idea because they own it and we have to find out if they're going to let us use it. But I'm I'm really concerned about not having any space at all. Again, anything we do is temporary. I'm concerned about that I'm not having any space at all next year. And maybe for two years, whereas Butler, you know, when we look at the timeline of building reuse, we were going to be at Pleasant Valley for a year.
That was five years ago, I think, or six.
But and it takes time and I understand that. It's it's nobody's fault. There's a process that that has to go through. And so that that's why I thought your idea had merit and I personally support exploring that further, just to know options. We did ask about the community center and I was told that every available space that is safe, because there's an entire building on the back that I believe I don't know if it's legally condemned, but it probably should be. There's an original building back there, right? It was an elementary school.
Yeah, and the floor tiles are are suspect.
Yeah, so that whole section in the way back is not even, you can't even enter it, so. But it probably costs too much to take it down.
Rivals, but this.
The D, the D wing? The D wing?
It was originally an elementary school. Yeah.
So as long as Fitch is designated and we're moving in that direction and that will be the space, I would be amenable to using S B Butler for the temporary, whatever temporary time it took to for us to get, what you said, for us to get Fitch the permanent place.
Well, I think as far as as far as Fitch is concerned, as a permanent space, it's all going to be, we're going to have to rely on the consultant that's coming in next week to find out whether they're compatible, I think. Right? She'll, she'll know better as to whether they would be compatible.
All right. But this, yeah, but this is getting into this this whole tight schedule and it still doesn't solve the where does robotics go for a year or two during construction? So so I think that if the board feels it would be talking to John Burt and the mayor, maybe to see if if they would be open to the idea, if they are you meeting with the fire marshal and maybe including the coaches to see if the space would work for them. And those can be two different meetings.
Pretty much the same space they're in essentially at Pleasant Valley. It's a big gym.
All right.
Oh, and an elementary size gym, but it's about the same size as Pleasant Valley.
All right. So I guess on that, who would support requesting that they?
I would probably start with John Burt. I'd probably talk to Mr. Burt first and 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 then the fire marshal. And get in there and take a look at it and have him take a look.
Yeah, so I think that if the board feels like we should do that, the the intent would be for the administration to just do those steps to see if it's even a viable option relatively quickly.
Yep.
All right, so how do we feel?
Should work on the on on these things concurrently. There's one thing we know is Fitch can be made available, even if it is long term temporary. Hopefully, they'll be able to live together. I have my feelings about that. But yeah, at the same, at the same time, yeah, phone calls could be made to John Burt, the fire marshal, whatever it takes to have people, John Burt say, yeah, sure, go ahead, look at it, we'll give you the keys. Have the fire marshal come over and say, I like, I don't like, or whatever. And yeah, let's take a look at the physical space. I don't have any idea that the roof's fallen in on S B Butler or anything like that. If it's in decent shape, otherwise I think the space is there for their operations, not being used for anything else. So yeah, and it takes forever, it seems, for us to get rid of our surplus buildings. How long is Pleasant Valley? You're right, been on the I remember when we shut it down. But any of that, so yeah, I'm in favor of moving on these things concurrently. I think it's doable and I'm respectful of your schedule and you got your hands full and I know you got your hands full as well. But it just seems like we're, 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 we don't mean to say it this way, like we're orphaning, we're going to wind up orphaning the robotics team. Which has been a jewel in our crown, Frank. Now, we don't mean to do that. But we're going to wind up doing that. Because at the end of the day, we probably don't have the physical space. If in fact, they have to live separate lives from the manufacturing center that's planned for the future. Well, where that, where's that going to happen? What happens when we don't have Butler? What happens when we don't have the community center? What happens if we can't use the senior center? What happens if, what happens if? They got to have a home. And that might mean an expansion, not a huge one. You heard of here first, folks. It might mean an expansion to to Fitch of a sizable room to to make make home for both or just say, folks, you're on your own. You know, let's just call it what it is. So that may be what's necessary, but right now they have to have a season. I'm concerned about losing a season and there might be a belief that, well, they can go about a season, they can always start up, you know, have a blank year and then start up again.
We won't let that happen.
That's not a great idea.
We're not going to let that happen.
Andrea? No, no. How do you, how do you, no, 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 no. No, how do you feel about requesting the administration to explore the idea of Butler while concurrently moving full speed ahead on getting them into Fitch?
Well, I wanted the other thing, but anyway, that's exactly what I said, right? That I would be, as long as switches is the designated space to be, I would be amenable to exploring, you know, having the fire marshal say yes, no, or whatever, or I'm listening to the consultant about and the fire marshal. So I guess yes.
All right. Jay?
Yes.
Mike? Jen?
Yes.
All right, is there anyone else online?
John?
What's that?
Did you ask?
Oh. I'm sorry. All right. There we have it.
Okay.
Oh, I will. And I got. I will talk to John Burt and.
Yes.
All right. And then people here and update board notes?
Yes.
All right.
Now?
Yeah.
On Friday. All right, let's see, there's a big white space in between number four and number five. No, I'm just kidding. Yes, any more discussion on robotics? All right.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Oh, God.
All right. I I don't, I don't know if I don't know who got it. I'll give it to you, Jay.
Yes, Jay, definitely, James. Anyway, it's farther away.